Everybody ready? Ready over there? Okay, here we go. North Smithfield Town Council, October 3rd, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you lead us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
...to the flag of the United States of America. And to recall where it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Well, it's nice to see such a full house tonight. We don't usually have anybody in the audience. All right, so what we're gonna do is we're just gonna make a couple of quick changes. Well, yeah. We're just gonna make a couple of quick changes. We're gonna move a presentation of citation to Eagle Scout for Brady Kowski to the top of the agenda. So, just a little background on this. Brady, I was supposed to go to your event, what, about two Sundays ago? And then, at the Rotten Gun Club?
Yeah.
And then what happened was there was a family event going on that I couldn't get out of, so that's why I asked if we could do it here then, and I appreciate you coming out.
Don't worry about it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Brady has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. He was here a few months ago when he was telling us about his project. Brady, you wanna come up and tell us about what the project that you did was? And how it went for you and everything?
So I don't actually have any slides to show you today, but I can tell you a little bit about what we did. What we did is we took, we did a ton of fundraising, and we made it so that 200 residents throughout the town of North Smithfield can get a free emergency response address marker on their home, so that emergency services can identify their house and where they, which house. Because as you know, houses in this town are a little bit out of order. And it's pretty bad. So that's basically what I did as a project.
Okay. And how long have you been involved with the Scouts?
Involved, around 10 years.
Okay. All right, well, we have a citation here. I'd like to read it off for you. "Be known to all that on behalf of the people of North Smithfield and the Town Council and the Town Administrator hereby present Brady Kowski in recognition of achieving Eagle Scout Troop 1139 of Sladeville, Project Reflective Address Markets to Town Residents. The entire community takes pride in the effort and dedication that is behind such an accomplishment by one of its citizens." All right, thank you very much, and congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda. Open forum pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-6. Is there anybody out here that would like to be heard during open forum tonight? Mr. Clifford?
Mike Clifford, 489 Blacklane Road. As many, as most of you know, I've been here since May four times, asking about the Farm, Forests, and Open Space Program and the taxation of solar land within that category. At this point, I'm just asking for some assistance in getting five numbers from the tax assessor so I can figure out how she arrived at, what she arrived at, and if it's correct or not. And I did send an email to her two weeks ago, asking her for the acreage, the amount of acreage in each of the five lots that are involved. And I haven't gotten a response from her. I sent her a reminder a week later, and I still haven't gotten a response. So if you could at least please get that, it would be appreciated.
Well, I told you I would have it this week. And I went to meet with the tax assessor on Friday. She was out. I went to meet with her on today. She's out. However, the Vice President and I have co-sponsoring an agenda item, so it's actually gonna be on the agenda for the next council meeting. It's not something that's gonna happen during open forum. And she's gonna be here answering questions. I would present your questions to the Vice President if I were you.
In the meantime, could you just ask her to comply with the residents' request for those five little numbers of information?
What, the five numbers that were on the top of your Facebook post? The one, the way you destroyed me, my reputation?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Okay.
Yep. She knows the email, she knows what I'm looking for. And I would just like those five numbers. Secondly, I'd like to question, did the City of Leagues and Towns in Rhode Island oppose House Bill 820 Substitute A? And it had to do with the taxing of solar land. And it was submitted by Mr. De Pasquale, well, not submitted by him, but on his behalf. He and one other developer promoted the legislation and got it passed. But the City of Leagues and Towns opposed this. And I'm assuming that the City of Leagues and Towns usually sends out information to its members about this bill. And it did say in the paper that the majority of cities and towns, you know, were very much opposed to this. I've heard in the past, when the organization takes that type of position on legislation, the council has passed resolutions in support of it, to have offered into testimony at the hearing on the bill. So my question is, did we do anything as a town? Did we send anything to the, or send a representative at the hearing to speak against passage of this bill? Because it adversely impacts this town.
Join, has that come across our packet yet from the? No, it hasn't even come across our desk yet.
And you people had no knowledge that this was being submitted?
I don't know if you're aware of this? But the Town Council is not, is not involved in the day-to-day activities going on in the town?
Well, John, excuse me, but you passed a resolution, you tried to pass a resolution dealing with, you know, boycotting Nike. You tried to pass a resolution calling for the school committee to withdraw from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. So I don't see why...
No, I did not.
This is, no, you didn't, Mr. ...
I did.
Yes, he did. So, I mean, this would have actually saved the town some money if you had tried to oppose this bill. So I wish you would focus on keeping in touch with the cities of Leagues and Towns, reading their newsletters or whatever they send out to the districts, because I know they do send out that type of information to the districts. How it doesn't get to the right person is apparently a flaw here. But it would have been nice if we had tried to oppose it. Last question is, where are we in the? Oh, and by the way, the latest bill, if you read it, it says you shall not be re, land, the real property on which they are located, they're speaking about solar arrays, and the real property is the land, shall not be reclassified, revalued, or reassessed due to the presence of renewable energy sources, resources. That does not mean you cannot reassess, it means you can't reassess the property simply because there's a solar array on the property. If it does, if it no longer qualifies for farm, forest, and open space, you are totally free, I believe, and maybe Mr. Igliozzi can weigh in on that at the next meeting, to take that away from it. It actually addresses how it's to be done in farmland and a percentage of the property. So if it's not, if it was, the reason why this has to be reassessed under the forestry program is because it was clear-cut. It had nothing to do with what they were building there. It had to do with the fact that they clear-cut the land, which qualified them for the DEM program. So the fact that there's a solar array, that this language does not prohibit you. This language only says because there's a solar array there, you can't reclassify it to commercial. But it specifically says pertaining to farmland, that yeah, if the land's in the farmland program and they're not using it for farmland anymore, and it's just solar, you can't. So, I mean, I think if you read this bill over, you might get a better understanding of why I'm so perplexed, the whole thing. Thank you.
Any questions before I leave? If there's any comments or questions? April Lombardi?
April Lombardi, 7 Indigo Farm Road. I wasn't planning on coming here tonight, but, you know, I spend so much time volunteering on so many things in this town to bring this town together. We plan community events, we plan dinners, we plan all kinds of things with John Biergard at the head of it, to do nice things to bring this town together, okay? Then I have people sending me Facebook screenshots of people that are creating divide in this town, and people who are going on somebody's Facebook page and saying really, really inappropriate things. John, you and I were talking earlier. Can you read some of the things that your child has brought to your attention from social media?
These are the things that were mentioned on Mike Clifford's Cliff Notes page. I think this gift is spot-on about how Johnny B. Bad is essentially a criminal.
Okay, that's one, a criminal. Interesting, a former state, how long were you on the state police for?
25 years.
Were there ever any criminal complaints that were, that brought you down at the state police?
No, there were not.
Anything? Okay, what else?
The whole board, that's all of us, is nothing but a bunch of crooked scumbags. This is on your page too. No, 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 no. Hey, you don't have the mic, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor.
Okay, John, what else? What else, John? What else, what else is your child reading on social media?
Oh, this is, how's this one? "John B. is going to face a rude awakening, tick-tock, tick-tock." How am I supposed to read that? What's that supposed to mean?
Sounds threatening to me.
You have to watch my back now?
Right.
"Biergard is a bully, simple as that." It's not that bad, but it kinda hurts my feelings.
It should.
"His role in hijacking the 2014 bond projects approved by the voters violates the town charter and its propensity to make a mockery out of state laws." You said this.
Yes, I did.
But you have no, but you provided no proof.
I'll back it up.
Okay.
What else, John?
I've made you hear these meetings.
Those are the ones that were provided for me. Oh, here's one. "I guess the latest check from the defund JB fund cleared." I don't know what that means. But those are the things that have been saying about me on Mike Clifford's page because I didn't get him the information he wanted in a timely manner.
That's classy.
Six months, six months.
Right. Again, Mr. Clifford, listen. You have a lot of facts, and people look to you for facts and for looking into things, and you have a role in this town. However, that continues to get really blurred when you allow stuff like this against somebody who's doing so much for this town, a hard-working family man that I know personally, and you're continuing to let people say stuff like this about him because you don't like him or because you don't appreciate him, okay? You sense everybody else, anybody I know has kicked off your page.
Mr. President.
People are kicked off your page! Okay? Listen.
He's getting it back.
You know what, though? Again, we spend so much time with community events, bringing this town together, bringing people together, because we have the best town that I've ever known, okay? And when you continue to create divide by allowing people on your page, by fueling the fire for people to call him a criminal and everything else, you are responsible for that, okay? It is not appreciated. Again, you have a role and you have a place, but you also have a social responsibility to not bring this town down and to not create an environment where people are constantly bashing this town and making it look bad and everything else, okay? We are doing some great things, and you should join the great things that we're doing. Okay, you have not, what's one good thing that John Biergard has done? You're looking into the fireworks, oh, there must be something wrong there. Okay, drive, I don't know, people are driving by your house when you're at work during the day and your wife is home alone. What's going on there? You're on a dead-end street. There's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. And I'm here to tell you that John Biergard is a stand-up person, okay? And the people that are on this town council, whether you like them or not, all five of them are not here because there's anything else to gain from being on the North Smithfield Town Council, okay? For what, what do you guys get? $2,000 a year? Two-something a year? There's no, they're here to volunteer their time to bring this town to a better place and to do good things for everybody in this town. And I thank each and every one of you for that. And I thank you, Mr. Zalinski, for what you do, because without you guys, we'd be sitting there in this little, old, boring town without a lot to do, without things for our kids to do, without, without anything bringing us together. So thank you all for what you do. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. So, did you wanna? Oh, okay. Anybody else wanna be heard during open forum? Okay, we're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna go to, we're gonna move up New Business F. Discussion by Council on other action on award of bid for Forestale Schoolhouse, exterior restoration, Phase 1C. Mr. Jesus? I know we jumped ahead, I don't know if you're ready for us. Rich, you wanna go up real quick?
We can talk about the bid process and how they became to decide and recommend to award Martone Construction.
So, Rich Keen, 7 Banford Street with the North Smithfield Heritage Association. So this, this project will allow us to finish the restoration of the exterior of the Forestale Schoolhouse. It involves putting a new roof on and building emergency exit stairs on the west side. The old ones unfortunately rotted away. It'll also allow us to build the base for a replacement cupola. But because the cupola is, came in so high, we're going to put that off, and it's basically ornamental, so we wanna focus on more critical repairs at this. ornamental, so we want to focus on more, more critical repairs at this, at this time. So it's about $90,000, I believe. And there was, there were, it went up the bid, there was one, one bidder, unfortunately, that was Martone Construction, but they're well-known in the, in the state for their work on historic buildings, and we're very, very happy with their reputation and the amount that they, that they quoted. We have, we have all of the, the funds available through grants, a series of grants that Beth applied for and fortunately received, so we're ready to start these repairs as, as soon as we get approval from you folks.
Richard, so the total is $90,394?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody can make a motion?
Mrs. Ferris, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't think anyone has any specific questions. So we thank the town for your support, for all the different times it comes for you, for additional funds to help. That kind of money helps us when we go to the grants and they say, do you have any funds that are matching this? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so Mr. Keen, so you have $102,000 of available funds for this project?
Yes.
Ms. Van Ness?
Two bids. We're gonna want two bids. One is for the roof with alternate one, and one is for the stairs, they're two separate bids.
Right, but I'm just asking how many funds they have, how much of the funds they have available.
Correct, right. There's enough funds to do both, but we've got to make two motions, just as a point of order. We'll make two motions and then authorize the chair to sign it, I mean, the administrator to sign it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yeah.
We're going to require contracts, so if you'll put that into your motion, get the contract, the solicitor and I will review it and authorize me to sign the contract, the town administrator to sign the contracts.
Okay.
Mr. Keen, Ms. Ferris, I believe anything your group does is well-resourced, beyond question, and I thank you for the time you're giving, because once these places, well, because of you, they're not being lost, and it's something that we speak about, history's important, and it's money well-spent. So I thank you for all your endeavors, really.
Make the motion. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the bids from Martone Construction for the Forestale Schoolhouse roof repairs and replacement in the amount of $56,944, and also reconstruct and install west-side stairs in the amount of $33,450, and also have the administrator and solicitor review the contract with Martone Construction.
Second motion.
And authorize them to sign. And that's a motion, and Ms. O'Hara seconded that. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Told you I'd get you right out. And we're gonna make another change on the agenda. We're gonna move up the EMA, discussion by council, hold on, wrong one. Still saying, discussion by council, what are the action on presentation by Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency? They had sent an email out requesting to be put on the agenda, so... So the plan's changed a little bit since the last time, right?
Yes, it has. So, first off, thank you very much for allowing us to speak to you, Mr. Chairman and the council. My name's Tom Guthline, I'm the executive administrator, our director, Mark Pappas couldn't be here, he's sick. So myself and Chris McGrath are technical service branch, will present a presentation to you about Mallory Tower as a, when we met with you last in May, we promised you we'd go out and we'd get some growth surveys, do some pictures, have a little bit of engineering done about the difference between using the existing tower and a new tower. Since then, there was a fire down in Richmond which took out their forest tower that housed their public safety communication system. So the actual lattice tower that we had, we've moved down there, we're in the process of erecting that to help that town so it can get its public safety communications back up, which means we're working with the state, and it looks like we may get some funding for a monopole to put up, which we're pretty 99% sure we're gonna get that, so that we can meet that spec if it's allowed or not. With that said, I'd like to have Chris come up, and we have some handouts for you to look at as he goes through his presentation.
So the presentation here, I know that last time when we were here and we spoke, there was several questions and different things that we had been asked to take a look at, so hopefully I've answered all those questions. We also met with the administrator and members of the town here, and went over some of these topics with them too, so I think we've put together, you know, a good, a good story here. So last time, we looked at what different options, we conducted the microwave pass survey, we took some additional photographs, and as the administrator mentioned, we've moved from a lattice tower to a monopole. So if you take a look at the picture on the second page there, the view from the current microwave height, you'll see the, the picture on the left there with the tower and the microwave, that's the current microwave that's on the tower, and you can see that looking around in the 360 view, those microwaves that are there now are looking directly into those trees. So that's really what's causing us our issue as we speak today, that's what the microwave is looking at, and as you can imagine, a point-to-point link looking into those leaves is not very effective. So we do see blips on that microwave, especially when we have high winds or rain, stuff that diminishes microwave pass. Because of what it's looking at right now, it does cause some issues. On the second page, excuse me, on the next page where it says microwave pass surveys, so we did have Aviat Networks, they're the company that does all of our microwave work, we contact, contract through, with them through Motorola. So we have two links that we're proposing. The first link is from North Smithfield to Burriville, and the second is from North Smithfield to Cumberland, that completes our northern loop of our microwave ring. So from North Smithfield to Burriville, it's 11.63 miles, and it uses a 6.825 gigahertz link, and I've notated there, it's a six-foot dish, and I'll kind of explain that later. That path from Aviat, they've stated it does not meet design requirements at 56 feet, which is the current height where the microwave at is on that tower. The required height per their study would be an 84-foot center line. So that's the center of that six-foot dish lying at 84 feet high. Second path to North Smithfield to Cumberland's, 5.52 miles, also using a six-foot dish, currently does not meet the design requirements, and it would require a 74-foot center line in order to get to where we need to go.
So you'd need two dishes on that?
We'd need two dishes on that tower, yep, pointing in opposite directions at those two heights, 84 feet and 74 feet. So on the next page, center line heights, as I mentioned, 84 and 74, so the current tower is 65 feet, so that's from base of the tower to top of the peak. And as you can imagine, a six-foot dish to mount that on any structure requires some substantial hardware, so even if we were to go on the tippity-top of the current tower, which is 65 feet, there's no way that we could mount a six-foot dish up there to get to the height that we need. On the next page, just for a point of reference, that's a coworker of mine, he's pushing a six-foot dish back into, that's a standard-sized Conex, so literally a six-foot dish is six feet tall, and, you know, as you can see, that's a rather large structure. It requires some substantial engineering to make sure it's securely mounted and doesn't blow around or blow off of the tower. The next slide, as Mr. Guthline mentioned, the Shannick Hill Fire Tower, that's a picture of the fire tower after it burned, so there was a significant amount of communications equipment that was on the Shannick Hill Fire Tower in Richmond. It was unfortunately set on fire due to some juveniles that were playing with fireworks. So the tower caught on fire, it burned the entire cabin structure, and also burned through several antennas and connecting lines. So when that happened, the town, that area, they did lose communications, and if we were to experience a similar event here at Mallory, we would experience a significant interruption in public safety communications, both locally and regionally. The next page, you can see the fire tower again after it burned, and next to it is a temporary tower, so the next day after the fire, we brought in a temporary structure that we had. We were able to assist the town of Richmond and the Southern Firefighters League were getting their equipment up on the temporary tower the next day, and that stands there as you see to this day. They are still using that temporarily for their communications. So where does that bring us now, what we're looking at? So as we mentioned, we're looking to construct a monopole tower on the site. We have gone, you know, back and forth about making sure that a monopole tower is the right fit for us. We have been assured by talking to several vendors and engineers that we can engineer and construct a monopole tower that will do exactly what we need to make sure that can, it can support the microwaves, the antennas, and everything that we need there, oversizing that structure to make sure it accommodates, you know, the wind load and other things that we're looking at. On the next page, I know there was some discussion last time also about what a tower would look like, what a monopole versus a lattice tower looks like, so I did a side-by-side comparison there. The tower on the left is currently constructed at Burriville, so that's where one of our microwave shots is actually gonna go, to that Burriville tower. I will note, that tower that you see there does have a cell phone array, because it was constructed by AT&amp;T for FirstNet. We are not proposing to put a cellular array on this monopole tower. So that's the best picture that I have there, but erase those cell arrays, those would not be on this tower that we're talking about.
So, quick question.
Absolutely.
So that's your tower, right? So if we couldn't, we couldn't get money to put a cellular, cellular dish on there, right? The town couldn't, we'd have to put it on the, on the fire tower if that's what we wanted to do.
Correct, yeah. This, this tower here was constructed by a cell phone company, but this tower that we would build would be our tower.
Okay.
Are you asking, who could, meaning the town could put cell arrays on there?
Yeah.
So that's something we could talk about, we did have to look at it after our equipment that we wanted to put on there. If there was room, there's a tight part.
Right, you would, you would have first, you know, you would do what you gotta do, and then if there was room, then there's a possibility that we could...
That's something we could talk to the, with the town about.
Okay.
If we wanted to do something like that.
All right, thank you.
The tower on the right, for comparison, it's a 175-foot tall tower, that's a lattice tower, that was actually the tower we just built in Charlestown. And just of note, you see a variety of antennas on there, those are all town antennas. So we constructed the town, the tower down there, had a great partnership with both the town council and the town administration, and we allowed them to put all those antennas on our tower to upgrade their communications. So their communications is now both in the shelter at the base, as we have here, and all those antennas are on our tower, forming a good partnership. The next picture on the right-hand side there, it says self-support tower simulation. So we hired one of our contractors to do a simulation of what a 120-foot monopole tower on the site of Mallory would look like, and this is what it would look like from 146 northbound. So if you were coming up 146, you're probably looking at me kind of saying, where is it? You're right, you can't really see it. There's a little dot there where you can see the, the cab of the fire tower, and right next to it is a monopole tower that they photo simulated in there. I promise you it's there, if you zoom in on the digital photo, you can see it, but as you can see, it's not very noticeable on that mountain top there. The next page, the blue X, this is an aerial photo looking down on the current Mallory Tower. The blue X represents where we photo simmed in the monopole. That's also the ideal location, that if we can construct it there, based on foundation surveys and all the work that we need to do moving forward, that would be an ideal location because it's the shortest run for the antennas and other coax cable that needs to come out of that shelter right there. So that's just a point of reference of where we photo simmed it in. On the next slide, so I just put in some benefits of what this new tower is, so I, I think personally for me, one of the biggest benefits is removing all those antennas off that current fire, fire tower. Being in the fire surface for 22 years, I appreciate the history of that tower itself, and I think it's almost a disgrace of how it looks with all that stuff on there, and to be able to pull all that stuff off, put it on an appropriate pole, and getting that tower back to where it is, not being used for communications, I think will really improve the, the historical value of that, that site. It also, you know, provides a public safety-grade location for this communication. As I mentioned, I'd hate to see something happen here like happened in Richmond, where we lose communications because of, you know, an incident at the tower, whether it be a fire, or, you know, a tree falling on it or something like that. Having this hardened public safety structure is, is really the best way to ensure communications. It improves coverage, you know, I think this would be a great public partnership between the state and the town, you know, allowing the town to put their equipment on there. We can continue to share use of the shelter and the generator and all the other infrastructure that's currently at the site. And then for us, having that dual microwave path coming off there, being able to hit both north, excuse me, Cumberland and Burriville, really increases the reliability and resilience of our site, not having to worry about microwave interruptions, having to pass again. So just in conclusion, you know, the tower, based on our survey, is not high enough for what we're looking for. Using a fire tower for public safety communications is dangerous at best. We'd like to construct that monopole tower there and look into what it would take to get that put up at that space, and if we were given your blessing to move forward, our next, next step would be to start looking at the site and the foundation and what it would actually take to, you know, secure a monopole tower up there. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
So what kind of timeframe are you looking at? Like once, once we say yes or no, like obviously yes, but what kind of timeframe are you looking at from start to finish?
It really depends all on this foundation. So until we get a better idea of what we look at for how we would construct that foundation, that really dictates how we go from there, because it's either gonna be a very involved foundation or a, you know, not as involved. Typical sites that we look at, it could take anywhere from eight to, eight months to 12 months, you know, for construction of everything in a typical site.
And with the access that you have to get to this location, is that something you can use, like going through that, the yards and going up the backways, does that create a problem with this construction?
Access is going to be something that we're gonna have to look at as part of the project, and, you know, again, until we know exactly what the project entails and what we're gonna look at, we don't know exactly what that's gonna be, but access is something that's a consideration that we're, we're definitely looking at.
We currently have an easement to get to that tower, though, correct?
We do. There is an easement, there is a private property owner that may be amenable, there may be improvements to the driveway once this heavy equipment comes out, which of course Rema would be, if it's agreed upon. There are two ways, to create a path through the easement due to the slope of the hill, then you'd have sheet runoff rain that'd be going, now, of course, you could do crush rock and whatnot, but you're still gonna have water going down to Windsocket Hill, which we already have a driveway where the water's somewhat mitigated coming out of that driveway. So there's two possibilities of approaching the, the top of the hill.
But obviously, this would be, all be under consideration, right? Like with the neighbors and the road condition, because we just finished the road pavement over there, so any, any damages that would be done throughout this time would be obviously corrected, is that right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any damage that happens to the tower, what's not on us, right? You guys take care of everything?
The current tower or the new tower?
The new tower.
The new tower, correct. Yep, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
So what are you looking from us tonight?
Well, we're hoping tonight to have your approval to move forward with the project, so we would like you to, you know, say, yes, we agree that this is, you know, a worthy project, it's not gonna cost you anything, and we'd like to be able to move forward, start doing our foundation survey and engineering.
Mr. President, if I may, there might be a person or two in the audience that may want to address the council, I can wait till after the audience has, but I do have some question statements, sort of combination of question and statements.
Do you have something?
Huh?
Do you have something?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know if somebody in the audience might want to speak before I do.
Ms. Keen, did you want to speak on this?
I would, thank you. I'm still Rich Keen, and I still live at 7 Banford Street. And, and for once, I'm not up here to talk about historic preservation, but rather just, just the natural beauty of Windsocket Hill. So, we have a subdivision regulations here in town that prohibit building on, on hills and bridge lines, simply because we want to preserve the natural beauty here in town. That, that old fire tower is, is iconic, it's, it's been there for, it's one of four that's left in the, in the, in the state. That old fire tower is iconic. It's been there for, it's one of four that's left in the state. But the new tower that's being proposed, I'm concerned that it's just going to be an eyesore. And believe me, I'm not against, I'm all for public safety, as you know, retired public safety official here in town. A little history on communications there. Back in the 70s, the Primrose Fire Department put a radio up there because, at the time, we had so many dead spots around town, both departments, because Primrose sat down in Nippsa Chuck Valley, and the North Smithfield Station sat down in the Branch River Valley, and we were, it was atrocious. At times, there were lots of places around town that we couldn't even talk to our trucks. Anyway, by putting a radio up there in the fire tower, we improved our communications to be among the best in New England. A London Dairy Fire Department up in New Hampshire could hear us when we were talking, so it was that good. I know the microwave is a different. It's come along since my time in the fire department. I understand the issues with the radio wave propagation up there. I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but was your propagation study done to alleviate the problem with the trees? Is that why you have to be up so high? So my only point is, is that you could make the tower lower, or put your antennas lower, if we cut some of the trees at the summit of the hill. Years ago, those trees only grew within the last probably 30 years. I can, I mean, some of you folks that have been around town can remember back when you could see the whole fire tower just about from... Now that those trees are grown up, you can barely see the cabin up there. So I understand the problem, but I think that we could lower that antenna if we cut down some of the trees up there. What that would also do is, maybe in the future, allow the public to, maybe after the tower's been restored, allow some of the public to go up there at times to use the lower level as an observation deck. The view from up there on top of the hill is absolutely incredible when you can see past the trees. So, cutting some of those trees up there would be good for not only your radio wave propagation, but also just for general public to be able to go up there and look about. So, if, I haven't had a chance to look at the pictures, but if you decide to allow them to put the new tower up there, I would only ask that it be placed as close to the fire tower as possible so that you wouldn't see two separate structures. You'd see one structure, maybe, I don't know how much you'd see of the new tower, but at least that would make it look visually more aesthetic. So, that's my only concern.
I share your concerns, and my concern is, I'm old enough that, I was on the State Police back in 1990, and there were dead spots, and it's scary when you're out there, especially down in Hope Valley. There were some dead spots out there, and you were alone.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want, I don't want, I mean, I don't want to see somebody have to go through that.
So, yeah, I mean, the fire chiefs and police chiefs associations for years were talking about, about, is it 800 megahertz? Is that what it is? Yeah, and it's nice to see that they've finally been able to achieve some sort of a statewide system. I'm all for it. I was for it at the time. I'm for it now. I'm just concerned about the aesthetics, that's all. That's the second highest point in the state.
Obviously. The dump might be higher, but...
So that's it.
It's the natural, the second highest natural site in the state.
Yes.
The dump may be higher than...
That was our concern when it was still active, yes.
I'm like John. I look at this and I say, "The tower's almost as old as I am. I'm almost as old as the tower." I've been up there. There are three fences around it that are cut through, so kids are getting up there. And the concern, be like what happened in Richmond, is that they could go up in flames and we would lose everything on it.
Well, it's a steel tower. That's not going to go up in flames.
Well, no, but the house would. The little house on top would.
Could get hit by lightning.
But it's in an isolated spot, and so even though they keep continuing to fence it, kids are still getting into it and getting on it, and it's blocked off that they can't get into the house. They can't get up the stairs all the way. But they're up there with their ATVs and whatnot. But, like John says, I look at this and say, "We made a commitment in July on the public safety to add guys for public safety for our own men and our own residents to have response times dwindled and whatnot." And this falls into that same category, that we have something in our town that's going to benefit far more people in our town, and that we need to look at this seriously and say, "Yes, give them the go-ahead to at least stop looking at it and proposing it." Because if you look and you see monopoles in other places, they barely show. Like, you know, when they show that picture from the highway, you barely see it. And that's why they're going to monopoles as opposed to the lattice towers. And to give you an idea of what kind of height they're looking at, the tower behind us here is 80 feet. That tower is 80 feet tall. So it's not something that's up in the sky, you know, that it's going to be sticking out like a sore thumb. It's something I think that we need to give REMA the go-ahead and say, "Yes, go ahead." You know, I think it's important. It's our responsibility, and it's something that's important, that we should be giving them the approval to go forward with it.
Yeah, and Mr. Keane, you know I'm all for the restoring of the fire tower. I mean, I sat with Cynthia for several days or hours trying to find money for that fire tower to get it restored. So I totally understand your point of view, but I also feel that communication is really important. So if we were to go ahead with this, would you be coming to us as you stop making plans or drawings so that we could kind of see where you find that the foundation would sit on the property? Yeah, just so we can kind of see where it's going to go, just because we are looking to restore that tower, and then maybe once the tower is restored, then we can go in on our own and try and cut some of the trees down or trim them so we can see the tower even more. But I just think public safety is the utmost, but I do understand your concern about the fire tower.
Yeah, but you look at that picture with all those antennas that are on it, and how do you restore that?
Right.
And, you know, I mean, we moved some of them from the annex over here, and some of those now aren't even necessary, but they're going to put them on their pole at their cost, power them with their generator. And then we can go in and do a full restoration of that building.
And then we can use it as maybe an observation, because there will be nothing hanging off of it and not obstructing any views, so it could be, you know...
Some of those trees may come down, too, when they're doing their construction up there, when they have to bring equipment in there to put a footing in. If you saw the footing on this thing, it's pretty big.
Yeah.
You don't see it, but it's down there. It's pretty big.
If they cut the trees, maybe they can lower the height of the tower, too. So that's...
Chief Lafferty, do you want to?
Good evening. Chief Tim Lafferty, North Smithfield Police Department. I just want to shed some light on the radio transmission in the law enforcement. And the fire chief couldn't be here, but I will speak on his behalf because we spoke about this in depth. So what we have here is we're a prisoner of our topography. The way Northern Rhode Island is set up, One Socket Hill is one of the largest hills in the Northern Rhode Island District. The tower that's there now and what they're proposing with the microwaves is an integral part of connecting the dots so the Northern Rhode Island radio system works under public safety. So it just doesn't affect the police department in our town. It affects all the police departments and communication as well as the fire department. So it's very important that this happens because there are still dead spots, even with the 800 system, due to the fact that the topography within the town. So we have very low-lying areas near the river basin, near St. Paul Street. Also, in Providence Pike, where the high school is, there's some low areas there. So the higher we go with the system and improving it to microwave technology other than radar or radio frequencies, it's going to improve the radio communications within law enforcement as well as fire, as well as emergency management. So I attended the last meeting. I never attended the first few meetings when a different tower was projected. And you can see, the writing on the wall is, you already had a jurisdiction in Rhode Island, have a fire in almost the same exact tower, am I correct? And it burnt down, they lost radio communication. It's obsolete, shouldn't be used for communication. And quite frankly, it's not going anywhere. So from my understanding is the monopole gets erected, it's only, it's less than 30 feet difference between what's there now and where the radio dish is, microwave dish. So I don't see it being any different from, and I live in town, you can see it. Most people drive by, probably don't even know it's there, who just move in. But, and if you cut the trees down, you're just going to see more of a bald hill and a fire tower and antennas. So I think it's a win-win, in my opinion, living in town and being in law enforcement, is that you keep the fire tower, you get, you know, up-to-date futuristic radio communication technology. And then the town can do what they want as far as any historical renovation of that tower. I just think it's, we need to do it because it connects the circuit and a lot of other towns and organizations rely on that. So it's just because it's the place where it is, and it just so happens winds up to be on top of a hill in our town. So I saw some of the renditions. To me, a tower is a tower is a tower, and antennas are antennas, and I think it alleviates a lot of pressure and stress that's on that old frame that's there now. So as far as the landowners and the dealings of the easements and how to get up there, I think that's kind of more or less been happening. So I don't think there's going to be anything more than the construction project that would probably disrupt that area of town. And I'm sure any complaints that come will be alleviated just through communication with the state. And the state, they're running the system. They're running our radio system. We don't pay anything for programming the radios, maintaining the radio system. The town doesn't pay anything for that. So they provide a great service. We've had no issues. And if I could just say, make another comment, and EMA knows more than us, some years ago, eight or 10 years ago, maybe more, we had a disruption because of trees and foliage being in front of the antennas in the Cumberland district that caused the radio to go down for a certain amount of time. So it does happen, and cutting the trees would probably be a temporary solution of a situation. I think this is just infrastructure improvement, especially in communication. To a police officer, your radio is just as important as your firearm. So I just wanted to give you what, seeing this project through the eyes of a law enforcement or a public safety official, that's all. Any questions?
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Chief. Mrs. Zelinski?
It's difficult to argue against public safety. Nobody in their right mind will argue against public safety. I think that we have to weigh the balance and look at what's been presented and what the potential for the future may hold. So when I, we've, the town, I want to thank Vice President Al for suggesting and finding that money so that we could improve Maori Tower, make improvements to it. But we've been very fortunate, Senator Reed through the Department of Justice was fortunate enough to get us about $144,000 to do these repairs. We've got pre-bids coming in, so we're going to have to go and follow the bids back and whatnot. Well, we may go MPA because it's under a certain amount of money. But just so that, I'm a firm believer in maintaining the view from One Socket Hill, but we also have to have public safety. So when I look at the power report that we paid for, the elevation at the top of that cabin is exactly 646 feet. I don't know what the elevation is in the Burrerville dish, the old Burrerville, the proposed old Burrerville, the Chopmists dish, or even the Cumberland dish. So if this is a network and these are the experts, I'm certainly not an expert. You have to look at the trees and the foliage around those sites. Do they need to cut back? Because I heard Mr. Keane say that we've got 20, 30 years by cutting back some trees. I think that's something we should be looking at. Now, switching over to, what I've been told by the radio folks, switching over to 800 band, there are eight antennas on that building. Much of those would go away with an 800-band antenna. So now, the other thing also from power engineering is the structure, the existing structure. If you've been up there, there are like nine windows, and those windows are encaged around them. It's like a fence, which with the new building inspector, he said, "Why don't we go up with, I'll call it hurricane windows, high-impact windows." We're lessening the load on the building. The asphalt flammable shingles on the building, the top, are going to be gone, and the sheeting around it will be replaced with a composite fiberglass and, I would say, for lack of, like a concrete, a mixture, which is, these are all flame retardant. The wooden threshold, the wooden steps going up are going to be replaced with galvanized steel. So the building itself is going to be much safer. Nothing's impervious to fire, but much safer building. So if we can give that some thought about cutting back our trees, maybe these other locations cut back their trees. And if it's a 23-year process where they've got to go in and cut down, not all the trees, because remember, that hill drops down quickly. So you're not looking to deforest all around it, just the path of the microwave beam. What else can I say? Certainly, I think the structure, I don't know the weight of the dishes. Gentlemen, do you know the weight of the dishes and how much wind load and ice share and all that stuff? Do we know?
I know, but the engineering does exist. I mean...
When we install a microwave dish on a site, there's an extensive amount of structural work and structural engineering that goes into that for exactly everything you mentioned, from ice load to wind load to all that sort of stuff. So that all has to be done and compiled by an engineer, excuse me, by an engineer. It's not something that we can just take a look at. The other problem, too, is the structure of the current tower, as I mentioned, those dishes, to get that six-foot dish to go where we're going on either side, it's not just the topography around Maori Tower, it's that topography all the way from North Smithfield to Burrerville. So it's not just the trees at Maori that we're looking at that are the problem, it's that entire path. So just clearing a few trees here is not necessarily going to take care of that problem when we're mounting a six-foot dish at 56 feet off the ground.
So currently, is there interruption of a microwave beam from Cumberland to North Smithfield, from North Smithfield to Burrerville? Because that's, I guess I didn't articulate it clearly. If they're up on a hill on Diamond Hill, and some of their trees have to come down, I think that would facilitate maintaining the vista that we have in town. I don't see, not an engineer, but we currently have, I believe, three dishes up there, microwaves?
There is, yes. So that site from there does not currently connect to Burrerville. It only connects to Chopmists and then Cumberland. So that connection to Chopmists and the connection to Cumberland are the two that are currently being impinged by the trees that we're seeing the interruptions. This site also connects to the City One Socket's dispatch center. That's how they connect into the core of our system. So by losing that microwave path to the City One Socket, they lose their dispatch center connection.
So REMA's proposing two dishes, and that dish would hit Cumberland as well as have some type of ability to connect with One Socket. And now we're going to New Burrerville, and are we, we're not planning to go to Chopmists any longer?
No, so the loop that we're building will go from North Smithfield to Cumberland and North Smithfield to Burrerville.
Okay. So I would just ask that we consider what would be the effect to take down some trees. Remember, the slope of the hill, you don't have to take down that many because it drops precipitously. It's a steep drop over there. So that's something, I want everybody to understand, I'm not against public safety. We need it. We heard the chief, or we've heard the fire chief. But if this is something that can be facilitated with an 800... that can be facilitated with an eight hundred band radios, less antennas, all for it, I'm all for it. But I think that, what do we have now, Rhode Island, three top, one burn, what are we down to, three now, fire towers? And then, again, I want to reiterate that this tower is going to be less likely to catch on fire. I mean, someone gets up in the cabin and spreads flammables, anything will burn. But the outside is going to be somewhat protected from that type of mishap where kids get up there. And by the way, that property to get up there, the gentleman that, the driveway, he's very diligent, who comes up his driveway. So it's not a case where people are going to be wandering up there. They can get there, kids, kids know how to get everywhere. So I, I just want the council to think about that there are other ways to approach this apart from putting up a monopole.
I think, the question, though, is, what Mr. Keen brought up, I thought was a great point, but the compromise would be if you could put that as close as possible to the existing tower, and then from a distance, and you'd only see stuff hanging up, coming up above the, the other tower, you wouldn't actually see the tower, right?
And that's our preference, too. So we want to get it as close to that existing building as possible because it keeps our coax runs that go from the building up to the antenna as short as possible. The shortest link possible is what we're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can get it right next to that building, where that X was on, on the map that you saw, that's what we're shooting for.
That's why this is here. We could have put this like out there in the corner, but to run coax from out there all the way over here is really expensive, that's why it's sitting right here in the corner. The other issue with, with cutting trees down, it's not the trees right next to it. They do, they impinge some of it, it's all the way out. Like, this tower had to be eighty feet to reach the annex. That's how different, though. It didn't reach the annex if it wasn't, if we didn't add the other twenty feet. There were, there were zones, and it had nothing to do with trees over here. It's, it's, the landscape of it goes out there, and that's some of the issues. And so it's not just a matter of, we can cut the trees around, around the tower down, and they can cut their trees around their tower down. It's the trees, it's the trees all over the place that are growing, as they grow and they get taller, and that's part of the issue, that it blocks some of that stuff. We didn't, we didn't want, we were looking at a sixty-foot tower, and then when we were doing it and they, they were up there at sixty feet, and they're like, you know what, I don't think we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to catch the annex, you're going to have a dead zone. And so we added twenty feet to it. And so, and, and that had nothing to do with trees in this area.
So just keep in mind, the, the reason, the optimum for towers are on the highest part of land that you can find, because that's the optimum height. So if you go to Diamond Hill, I don't know the height of Diamond Hill. I don't think there's a lot of trees growing up between here and Cumberland that come up to six hundred feet, I, I just don't. So it's not my decision, I, I, I give you as much thought process that I have, I just think that if you could, and I don't see why you couldn't, certainly you wouldn't want to make it a public meeting because then the public would trounce around up there. I, I think maybe if one or two of you went up there at a time, walked up those stairs and looked there, over to Cumberland, and you looked over to Chopmists or Burraville, you may not see the trees that are being portrayed to be a problem here.
Aviat Networks that we hired to do the past study, they do a, a pretty extensive path study. So they, they have a lot of sophisticated equipment that they, they physically map out that entire path, and the figures that they have sent us accommodates everything between point A and point B.
Does that study indicate potential removal of trees or cutting down of trees within that? I've seen that study, it's very, you have to be an engineer to understand it. I'm a visual line of sight, so does that study say that if you took fifteen feet or you took a hundred trees in the path out of the way, you'd have clear point of microwave to microwave?
It, it doesn't get into the specifics, as we mentioned, from, from North Smithfield to Burraville is eleven point eight-three miles, I think, that's, that's quite a length.
You know what, not to interrupt, I'm sensing that the council is ready to make a, make a call of, make a vote on this, that's, that's the impression I'm getting from my fellow councilors with the questions that they're asking. If anybody doesn't have any objections on this?
Mr. President? Can I make, can I make a motion to authorize REMA to move forward on plans for communication tower alongside the Maori Tower location, and continue to come back to us with updates?
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? The only thing I'd like to add is, out of the gate, believe it or not, even with my background, I was against it, but then when you're talking about if we can put it close and, and it's not really going to be an issue as far as visibility, makes a lot of sense to me, and also there's, of course, the public safety issue, so I'm going to support this. Anything else?
Can we just, can we give you the, the communication or a line to get in touch with these neighbors so you can be speaking to these neighbors so they're aware of it, that we're going to be, can you guys open the dialogue with them?
Sure, we can work with, with the town to find out who those people are and know what we're doing, how we need to be.
Okay, just so they're, they can understand, because they're, you're going to be going through their property, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that this vote before zoning and planning for their review. Let me, might I ask, is this something that's still before the zoning?
It's, obviously, the town's authorizing, or you're authorizing them to utilize your land. Their project would still have to go through the, whatever, the approval process, I don't know.
What, what approval would they need?
Well, I'm hearing from Mr. Keen, there's a height restriction, they'd have to get a zoning variance for height above thirty feet?
We didn't get one for this tower.
I, I don't, that may have been a town action.
Because, because on the, on the communication towers, the town is exempt when they build a communication tower on their property.
I, I don't think this is the town building a communication tower on their property, that's the question. I mean, they need to make sure they vet that out. They, they got their lawyers, they need to do that. I just, I don't want people to not be aware that if there's zoning and planning requirements, they're going to have to go and comply with those.
I'm not really sure where...
Well, when you, in the past, when you were with other communities, did you have to go before planning and zoning?
We had, no. We, we entered in the MOU with the town about whether the tower was going to be erected, and that we would look back to their council, but we didn't have to go through any of their zoning processes because it was public safety, and it was already out, like we'd show them through it ahead of time.
That's a, that's a, that's a, I could see a zoning and zoning restriction decision, we just want to be sure they're aware of it. And it sounds to me like they entered the memorandum agreement, means that there was a town act and under its authority on their behalf, that's different than we were asking here. We don't have an MOU in front of us, they just asked, could they go follow the plan if it's not an MOU, it's a town act, so it needs to be a little bit more structured here as to what they're doing and how they're going to do it.
But we've got to get the ball rolling with this vote, and this is step one, right?
I think that's what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, so if it goes before planning, that's, you're going to have to have these plans ready to present, location, height.
So, I understand, but I mean, to move forward, we have to do that initial engineering site survey for us to figure out where and how big and what we can do in order to draw those plans that you talked about, we're going to have a zoning.
Right, so you need this vote to, to get the ball rolling.
The mo, the motion, the motion that the Vice President made was, was to authorize them to begin the process.
Okay. And Mr. Vadenay seconded?
No, Mr. Vadenay didn't.
Didn't he?
I did.
Mr. Vadenay did.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right, thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
No? Yes.
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 Yes. Thanks, guys.
North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners, discussion by Council Board of Action on firearm and/or ammunition sales, DBA KMD Sports LLC, Keith Delude online sales. This license will be effective from nine nineteen twenty-two through twelve one twenty-three. Keith, you want to go?
Absolutely.
This is a continuation from the last meeting.
Keith Delude, twenty-four Indigo Farm Road.
Before you go, Joanne, can you explain what you were explaining to me today about the license?
I, I did make the service that you two invited, but we originally started out with business registrations for these firearms, that's what we've been doing for years, and the, the, while, um, since the boot, had applied to the business license, it had already gone before zoning, and this was already approved by, carrying, and it was here. Somehow, we kind of lost in the shuffle while we were checking in the package, to be, we decided doing some more digging and found out that this was actually, should have been shown as a license, not a business registration. It was a chart, and I'm only hope that had all the licenses categorized in firearms as one of them. So all these years that has kind of gone through, as a business registration was checked at, it was so, it was approved and pushed through, and we were reviewing, so that this really should have gone for council right here, which generally shows you that, and also without the firearms, there should be going through the API check and all the other channels. So unfortunately, this is a first...
Test case.
Test case to move forward as a license, instead of business registration. At the next, November, we do the renewal of all the licenses, we're going to have all the other firearms, companies, businesses, whatever we have, following suit, so they, they really have nothing different, but these still the same, but it's going to be tracked a little better, where we can see, make sure they have all their, if they work the letters.
So they will need a federal firearms license, which was not a requirement as a regular business registration applicant. The part we use, if we may prompt that upload, which the way we set it up now with the general business licenses, we would need that FFL license to be current and uploaded, as well as the, the certificate from the zoning official.
Do you get all that? Any questions for me?
Did you get all that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you know, one thing, there was a comment, comment about background checks, I guess, for, for people who, who have the FFL licenses, you probably know more than anybody, if you have a license through the ATF, they've already done their background check on you. There's, I mean, I don't really care if they do a background check on me or not, but, you know, we're...
But what she's saying is now every year, you're going to come back like, like a regular business and come back and reapply for your, your business license, and that we do that in December, right?
Yes.
And, but what she did was she, because we're so close, she, she made this, you don't have to come back now, this December, it's the following.
Right.
All right, so they gave you a little lecture on that.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Delude?
You are, you are aware that there are no onsite sales allowed?
Yeah, I don't, everything I do is pretty much on, online.
I, I read all your stuff, but I'm just saying, it says, according to what the paperwork that we got from the building inspector earlier, and no onsite sales.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have a gun shop running out of my house or anything like that.
That would be, that would be my preference, that, that's part of the stipulation, that there are no onsite sales, strictly online. And I understand, it's very regulated, federal firearm laws, and I understand, leading all the, all the background to this and everything, but my, I'll start it off. I'll make a motion that we approve the license to KMD Sports LLC for the purchase and sales of firearms, hunting, fishing, and other sporting goods online, stipulation being no onsite sales.
Second motion.
That was the second by Ms. O'Hara, is there any more questions, a, a discussion on this?
It does have all the proper sign-offs that we need from the town.
Good, roll call, good. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Bo, you have any updates?
Hmm?
You have any updates?
I do.
Okay. Discussion by Council Board of Action on update of the municipal building review task force. Mr. Vadenay.
Ladies and gentlemen, the task force met with Tecton and discussed a proposal that you approved, and we reviewed a timeline that they submitted. They would start design development by the end of October, lasting about three weeks, and then we have a scheduled meeting with them on the twenty-second of November. Assuming task force approval, they would begin construction documents and cost estimating with another meeting with them around the end of January for review. Assuming authority is granted, they would go out to bid early February of 2023 with awards at mid-March of 2023. We also discussed cost estimates for the new construction that was put on hold because of the uncertainty in the market and, and the way that things were fluctuating and everything, and they continued to do research on it, and they actually got some pricing from a contractor with construction managing, and they came in with a conceptual estimate in the neighborhood of eighteen point eight million dollars, which is a little more than the eighteen point three we were looking at, but that number includes escalation out to May of 2024, which is a year later than where we were originally looking at. So we, we're pretty confident that we have the numbers under control, and as they go through this process, we're going to let them continue with the process to get the building repaired and fixed so it's usable while we continue this, and probably in January, the task force will come back to you to try to get, it won't be me sitting here, but the council to move and get us a special election going for the spring so that we can, we can get this thing rolling.
Are prices starting to be more consistent now?
Uh-huh.
Are prices not in the level of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what they're seeing, and, and so, like I say, they, they, it went up about a half a million dollars, but they're carrying escalation out a whole year further out than they were at eighteen point three, so they, they, you think that things are, the market has, has changed, the way, it's not doing this anymore, it's kind of, it's running at a, at a flatter line, and who knows, who knows with the, with the economy, the way it's going, that construction could just, could just stop all of a sudden with inflation and, and the interest rates going up, everything could just stop, and so we don't, you know, no one can see out three years, and so they're just basing things on, on the market and, and what's going on out there.
Okay.
But they're, Tecton was, was, was very confident that we have a, we have things under control now, things are in more control, it's not, it's not, it's not fluctuating that, you know, we, we'll cut stuff out of the building and the price still went up higher than when they originally had.
Right.
The escalation and, the escalation is going down a little bit, as well as carrying contingencies, the contingencies are, are less, less volatile right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Vadenay?
Discussion by Council Board of Action on installation of telephone poles on Graves Avenue. Ms. Pendigas.
You should have in front of you the, the plans from Rhode Island Energy for the fire, the installation of five telephone poles for Graves Ave. This is the final chapter of that Elizabeth Ave development. Presently, I believe they have one house under construction, they need to get these poles up with lights at the cost to the developer, so I recommend that we approve this and move it forward.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Pendigas?
Now, they're putting the poles in, this road is already there.
Road's already there, binded.
It's already, they have been accepted by the town.
Well, it's, it's, it's binded, yes, so far, the, the final cost has not been done, so they've got some work to do, but it's, it's progressing, and they want to, they want to...
I know that there were issues previously up there on some of the roads, so I just have to...
This has been about twenty years, so, they just want to get the houses completed and...
Okay.
Any other questions? You're just looking for a motion approved, right?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion approved?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the installation of telephone poles on Graves Avenue from Rhode Island Energy as per the direction of the DPW director.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Two seconds.
Does this need the administrator's signature?
Um, Joanne, can you answer that one? I think, I believe so, and I believe, I believe that... the signatures of all council members also.
And also authorize the town administrator to, um...
It's a, it's a pretty standard form. It's the same form we go through with grid. Now it's Rhode Island Energy. It goes to Rhode Island Energy, Verizon, and to the town.
Okay.
All right. So disregard that part.
Well, you just have to, you got to give them an executed copy of it, that's all.
Okay. So just to, just authorize the town administrator to sign.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Sir, what are you doing here? What, 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 what do you have? The what one?
Uh, there was a, overcharge for a town sewers bill. I've been charged for.
Oh, okay. Okay. He didn't have to come here for that, did he?
Where is that?
Must be, uh...
All right, there. C. Item C, John. New business C.
Oh, for the sewer? All right.
Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, Chris Troisi, five hundred twenty-seven Menden Road. Uh, I'll try to be short as three hours into the night. I moved into North Smithfield, Massachusetts, in December of 2020. Um, it wasn't until 2021 I learned how everything was built and sewage, um...
Hey, guys. What's the matter? Oh, I'm sorry. What's the matter? You look confused.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Check, check. Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, it's all right.
All right. Want me to go from the top? I'm getting good at this. I'll go from the top. There we go. Oh, yeah. No problem. Uh, Chris Troisi, five hundred twenty-seven Menden Road. Uh, I'm saying, I've been a resident of North Smithfield since, uh, December of 2020. Um, I moved into a house that, um, while plenty big, we were under the impression from the, uh, the real estate, uh, listing, as well of all, as well as all the other signed documentation, that it was a single-family home. It wasn't until, um, July of 2021 that I was billed for, uh, two units instead of one. I honestly was not aware of this, uh, bill. See, they send you a mailer, it has four coupons on it, you send one in every quarter to pay it off or whatnot. Uh, for some reason, for some reason or another, I just didn't have it. I didn't, uh, address it. It was, I followed up with Mara Beck, um, this past July. She said that I, I owed, uh, over a thousand dollars, which is the charge, uh, the charge of two units, as well as the late fee. And then I have my 2022 billing coming up as well. I, um, I spoke with Mara Beck in the sewer department about my options. She said bring up to the sewer, uh, the sewer, uh, water sewer council, and then I'm here with the town council. Uh, basically, I was being charged for two units. I was, I was only in one unit, um, for all the, um, the listings on the, uh, when we purchased the house, all the signed documents. It was always single u, uh, single-family home. Uh, I, it was always being charged as two units for some reason. They never addressed it with the town. And I'm basically just looking to have, uh, some sort of compensation for the, the bill that I paid basically twice as much for last year. Uh, I've already paid in full, uh, with penalties for being late. My apologies.
That happens. Um, who's, uh, speaking for?
Can I ask you, sir, is this your first home that you bought?
Uh, no. My, I, I'm originally from Wakefield, Massachusetts. They did, uh, everything, um, online. And so you'd always get a, a, a notification if you missed a payment or if a payment was coming up or whatnot. It was, uh, never really done, uh, through mail. And so this is my first time in, uh, kind of dealing with.
Because I read about it. Seems something I had to.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
There is a letter attached, um, from Mara Beck. Um, I guess it went to the sewer commission at eight seventeen twenty twenty-two at that time. They denied it, um, due to the fact that it was, um, over a year, and they do have an, um, appeal process that they have in place when someone, um, like this gentleman, um, disputes a bill and, um, therefore, um, they denied it at that time. That's the only information I have, is what Ms. Beck had submitted.
Because of the cold and everything else and how everything was terribly, especially had children disrupted, I'd like an exception made for this.
So, um, I'm a little confused. So if, really, he either has the two units or that he doesn't, right? So if he doesn't, then he should get his rebate. Is that something?
From, my understanding, did, um, the tax assessor go to your home?
They did. And they confirmed that it was a single family?
Yes. They, they agreed with him. Absolutely. I remember when the, a deputy and the tax assessor went to your home, and they came back and said, yes, he did not have the second kitchen, or was they deemed?
Right. There, there's all, there's all the hookups in, uh, one of the bedrooms where there were stove hookups, uh, outlet for the, the refrigerator and whatnot, but it was, it was never used for that. Or if it was, it was.
The unfortunate part is because he did not follow the appeal process. We have an appeal process in place for a reason, um, just like your revows. If you missed a deadline, it's up to you, though. It's not up to me.
I'm sorry.
I, I think the simple answer is that the sewer board does not have the ability to abate a sewer charge that hasn't been appealed in a timely basis. The council does, just like you have the right to settle a lawsuit. So if you're satisfied with the merits of the request, this should be considered a request to abate taxes, like when somebody moves out of town and they had a vehicle unlawfully taxed. If you agree that this is a, well, it should have been a single tax and, um, charged as a single-family unit, then it merits abatement. And I think the amount requested is five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
That's correct.
So that would be the motion if the council sees fit.
And again, I'm going to say during that time, there's a lot of confusion everywhere. Especially, uh, working at home, children, educate, trying to educate your children during that time. Really, you're lucky, uh, you found your house at night after going here and there. So I, I think an exception because of the state of the country, a town, et cetera, should be made.
Seems like a no-brainer to me. Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments?
I mean, when you, when you read the, the letter, it's saying that it was on, it was on the list of the building inspector's list of in-law apartments. But then it also, if further down, it says there were no permits filed in the building inspector's office, and the home was removed from the building inspector's list of in-law apartments, and the property card was updated. So...
Updated only recently, though.
Right, in twenty-two, when, when it was brought to their attention. So, um, and then it also says that you can only appeal once everything's paid. So.
Which I have done.
You have probably already passed the appeal process.
Yeah, I think, I think it was only, uh, thirty days or some, or something that mattered. It was, I had no, no idea that I was, I, I didn't pay it. I was out of, uh, the appeal process window or whatnot before it was too late. So that's why I'm here now.
I mean, uh, let me look at that face. How can we deny this, uh?
That money will go towards her gymnastics classes. I'll tell you that much. Keep her happy.
All right. So the amount that you're appealing is?
Five twenty-seven ninety-nine.
He wants us to abate five twenty-seven ninety-nine.
Correct.
All right.
But like you say, if you follow the letter, we have procedures in place, and they weren't followed.
They weren't followed, yeah.
That's right.
And I understand that you can look at things and say, oh, well, number one is, it was an in-law. It was registered as an in-law apartment. They never pulled a permit to change that. Now, they may have changed it when they were putting the house up for sale and saying, someone said, it might be easier to sell if you took that out of there.
But it was never registered.
But, but they never got permits to prove that. So there was no way for the town to know that it was not an in-law apartment anymore.
All right, Mr. President.
And so he, so he, so he's appealed it. Not in a timely manner, though. And so the sewer board says no. And then if you follow precedent, we've, as a council, haven't approved when they haven't followed the process either.
Hi, Mr. President.
But we weren't always in this, this state of affairs with our country, with schools, how it affected our children, et cetera. And if the kids are stressed, the families are stressed, we're lucky that, uh, things are going as well. So again, um, seeing what a lot of children, especially families with young children, uh, that we could make this one exception, especially when everything, uh, economically isn't at its best, and I'm sure they could do it some more.
Mr. President?
Ms. House?
I'd like to make a motion to abate the, or issue a credit, um, in the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents to, um, Chris?
Troisi.
Troisi, sorry.
Oh, you're fine. No one gets it right.
Five twenty-seven Menden Road. Um, would that credit just go on his account, or, okay? So there'll be a credit on your?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Did you pay this year already? I'm sorry.
Um, I've paid the first quarter. I haven't paid.
All right. So we'll give you a credit, and whatever difference we owe you, we'll mail you a check.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Well, we, we had to make the vote first. You don't know if it's going to pass. Getting ahead of it.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. House made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. House? Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait.
No.
I, I salute you for coming up and speaking up for what you think is right. Teach her that. Nice and polite. What grade is your daughter in?
Sir, what, uh, what grade are you in? What's your name, sir?
John Sarekano.
Oh, he's, he's with you. Oh, okay. Uh, discussion by council, what are the action on North Smithfield supporting military slash veteran service? Both men and women, active veteran banners presented by John Signaro and Mr. Corvo. Mr. Corvo, you want to take it?
Uh, okay, go ahead. Uh, so I, I've known John for, for a couple of years now. Uh, actually, our daughters play soccer together. And he has a son, which he might, uh, he might mention, uh, that just recently went into the Marines a couple of years ago. Um, and he wanted to, um, honor not only active, but also veteran, uh, military members. And as him and I started talking, he had presented it to me a couple of months ago. He had asked if, you know, how I felt, and if it's something that the town would support if he presented. And obviously, you know, I encouraged him to, uh, attend a town council meeting, present it to us. Um, he'll go over some of the, uh, some of the banners that he had received, um, pricing and everything. And, you know, and obviously, at that point, it's really up to the council to, uh, to decide if this is something that, um, that kind of fits what we want to do as a town. Uh, and he'll get into the, the funding and, and, uh, when the banners would go up and such. So I'll just pass it off to John and have him, uh, have him go over this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Corvo. So, name's John Sarekano. Been a lifelong resident in this town. Matter of fact, I attended school here and ate lunch right where you guys are sitting. So, um, I didn't have the pleasure of having Mrs. O'Hara as a teacher, but I did have the pleasure of having Mrs. O'Hara give me a stern talking to during recess at Hollowell. So, um...
It was with love.
It definitely was with love. Um, so thank you for allowing me to speak here, um, in regards to the, uh, supporting local heroes, is what I call it. Uh, and it's going to be just a high-level overview of, uh, what I am proposing. I apologize as far as the technical issues. So I'm going to kind of use the cues, the PowerPoint that I created for cues. Uh, well, unfortunately, you won't be able to see my exceptional PowerPoint skills, and I am one hundred percent being sarcastic with that. Uh, but I believe, uh, Mr. Corvo has it there with you there. So, um, so I will, I reached out to a company that makes the banners and had them provide a free sample for me. Um, so I will show you quickly what that looks like. Uh, so this banner would be obviously hung on a utility pole. Uh, what I have here in the, the slide that you'll see is proposed area to put that on. Um, they are twenty-four by forty-eight. Uh, they are one hundred dollars each. Uh, there is a bracket that goes along with it, um, which are, depending on the quantity, which we would need ten to forty-nine would be a forty-dollar, uh, forty-eight-dollar added charge to that. So a total of one hundred and forty-seven dollars for a twenty-four-inch banner, just like this one that I provided. Uh, there is a shipping cost of sixty-nine dollars for, uh, the brackets that all come together. So that's just a one charge that you have to do. Uh, there is a thirty-minute roughly max, sorry, thirty-minute max to install the banners. Um, and as far as donations go, uh, and funding, so partnered with a senior for the senior project fundraiser. So reaching out to a senior, having them involved in, uh, orchestrating a fundraiser, whether that is a five K, um, car wash, whatever the case may be, most likely a five K is, is preferably the, the first choice, um, for fundraising for the funds. But also, there is also a option of possible family sponsorship. So like myself, my son is in the Marines. We can provide or offer sponsorship from the family. Uh, we can do that through multiple different ways, whether it is through the paper, uh, through the monthly subscription of the North Smithfield magazine that goes around town. Um, so there's definitely a couple of different ways that we can fund it. And if you go to, uh, the slide where I propose we put up the banners, is actually first here on Green Street, right in front of Town Hall here. Uh, there are twenty-five utility poles that are owned by the, the city, um, and we can start there. Um, anything further out, we would probably need some sort of approval from Rhode Island DOT, considering since they're the state-owned utility poles. Um, and if you can go to the two slides after that, I propose if we do, once we get that approval, to expand out more towards the old Town Hall, Town Hall, um, through Main Street to the post office and down North Main Street, uh, and a little bit of School Street as well, towards the old Forestale School. How many banners are we talking? So that is really where I, I'd need a partnership with, with the council to find out. I don't know how many veterans we have in town. Uh, I only, from my Google search, saw there was plenty of North Korea, I mean, I'm sorry, the Korean War veterans and Vietnam veterans. Oh, it's not for, I thought it was for current active duty. So that's, that's the other part, too. So depending on what we have for numbers. So we could do it for active duty starting, and then we can look into going further into, uh, the actual veterans. Um, that's where I would kind of need some help to see how many we have. I, I don't know that, I don't know that number. Um, and I don't know if there's a way that the council can provide that number or point me in the right direction, and I'll be more than happy to, to do the research.
And would the, would these banners be, uh, put up, stay up year-round or, or, or like seasonal?
So seasonal. So I, I, I propose going up Memorial Day weekend and then coming down the weekend after Veterans Day. Um, so this way they're up for the majority of the year, taken down for winter, um, less, uh, chances of them getting ruined during winter, um, and then up again next, next year, next Memorial Day. Is it, who's going to put them up? Is it, you're looking for it, Public Works? That's, that's what I'm recommending, yes, Public Works. And again, it's about a half hour max to, to install a banner. Uh, it is two straps, um, just like if you're driving through one socket, they have the, the, the United, the, the American flags up on, on Diamond Hill Road.
Menden Road.
In Menden Road. They, they have that banner, that strap, there's, instead of one, there's two. Um, so basically, it has a bar that comes through the top here, and then strap to the pole, and then same thing on the bar. So I would say, yes, the, the Pox and Rex, or Public Works, whatever department, um, would facilitate that.
Um, I'd like to interrupt slightly here. There's a group of people, uh, looking at the cities and towns with flags up, and we had even counted poles, believe it or not. There's a group of us swimming down one way to the other. And about eight years ago, I worked with the CNCs, and we raised ten thousand dollars at a silent auction in outside, uh, Bage. So I think... So I think there's a lot of people who, in the CNCs, I think two of their five children saw active, daughters now. One son is, maybe in Germany, I'm not sure where he is right now. But I think it'd be a wonderful senior project, but to make really money to take care of this. We could get a corporate sponsor aid and that's the way to go. We wouldn't have made $10,000 after expenses. We would've made $60,000. So maybe we can get together. I will get the other people that helped. I think, and we were talking about this, you walk into the towns, they have the flags up. And at least we did have Reese, et cetera. It's, it's wonderful and it's showing pride for our country and the men serving. I think it's fabulous, whatever I can do.
I appreciate that. So in, as far as corporate sponsorship, you're referring to like American Legion or?
No, I mean corporate.
Like?
Companies.
Okay, gotcha. So like retail companies or something like that, along those lines?
Big ones.
Okay. All right, so you've, yeah, I would, I would love the partnership if, if, if you, if you could. And if, I, I feel getting the senior involved really
Absolutely.
will also kinda strengthen that bond in what we have in this town. Having a senior take care of it every single year, whether it's fundraising for maintenance or fundraising for the installation, I think it's a, it's a great senior project for a senior every year. And I, I already have one volunteer this year. I don't see it being a problem going forward. It's just a matter of how we wanna really fund the actual cost.
So I just have a question.
Absolutely.
It's a great idea, but I'm just trying to think going forward. So like where would you store all these in the off-season? You know, how would you rotate them out? Because if we only have 25 poles, obviously, we have to start thinking about other areas and so how?
Logistics of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we only can come up with this one road, like how would you kind of
Propose it?
switch them out so everyone gets equal time, like?
So, so when I hear, when I, when John had reached out to me and said, and I know it was brought up in a couple of meetings where, you know, you have the, the telephone poles or the poles that aren't necessarily overseen by the state, which ironically, all of the electrical poles and light poles, other than Green Street, are run by the state, if you look at a map. Except Green Street, they just, it's just there where
Right.
it's, it's not, it's not run by the state.
Funny, 'cause it's a state road.
Right, yeah, yeah. When you look at DOT.
It's the irony of it, yes.
And I, and I, and I verified with a, so I reached out to National Grid. And there is an application that needs to be completed, which, you know, John, they'd have to complete. She said it's not something where it's either, you know, scrutiny, yes or no. It's if you complete it, then it's just gonna be approved. There are certain restrictions and stuff like that. But, you know, to, to Councilwoman Alves' question, yeah, how would you rotate them? I could see that as more of a, an issue if it was just kept to Green Street, being that it's just 25 poles. But if we could, you know, strategically plan, you know, it's nice, too, because Green Street is very historical in and of itself. But also, Slatersville itself is very historical, going up to Victory Highway, going up near the Annex Building. You know, I mean, you and I pointed out, you pointed out that there was a, was it a Korean, the Korea, the plaque?
Korean War, oh, Vietnam War, or was it?
Was it Vietnam War? You said there was a plaque inside?
Oh, inside Memorial Town Building.
Yeah, and so, yeah.
That's when World War I.
Okay, all right.
That's why the building was built, for the, for the guys that left town.
Right.
In World War I, when they built Memorial Town Building, there's a whole placate side, tells you the names of the, the sons from North Smithfield that served in World War.
So, so when you look at this area, I think there's a lot of history with that of residents having, you know, family members serve. So, you know, back to the point, so I think if we expanded beyond that, we might get to the point where we might have to have or there might have to be some sort of guidelines as far as how we're gonna rotate it. You know, maybe it's kept up for two years and then it's given to the family member, you know, after that. I mean, there's, there's lots of things we can do, but I don't necessarily think by expanding, I think it'll give us, give them ample time to kind of figure that out.
Yeah, I, no, I, I agree. As far as to answer your question, I think that's part of the role that I, I feel a senior project can probably handle as far as how long, the, the application process and the rotation of the new banner coming up and the old one coming down. I have, I, I volunteer myself. If that needs to be to some sort of person in point of contact or overseeing these, these parts of the logistics, I have no problem taking care of that. But that was one of my concerns and one of my questions that I wanted to bring up to you is the logistics side. How do we, how do we move forward? Is it okay if someone, as far as a volunteer that handles that? Or does it have to be someone that is from the state, I'm sorry, from the city that oversees that?
It sounds like you still got some stuff to work out.
There is definitely some still, some, this, this was more of a higher overview of it and kind of get the ball rolling. Is it something that the, the, the town would be willing to move forward? Costs to have it all planned out, fundraisers, Mrs. O'Hara and myself, we can, we can, you know, partner with that. And, and I don't see funding being an issue, I really don't. There's plenty of means and this is, this is enough, it, it's a cheap way to really provide patriotism in, in, inside the town. So $147 all in on one banner. If I, I, from what I figured out, it's probably gonna be 30 to 50 banners that we need. Half of that is right here on Green Street. So I, I, I think funding won't be a problem. I really don't.
You know, as you, if you think you're gonna have more banners than that number, maybe some of the larger businesses in town, like Brigados Plaza, like Lee Way, like, what is it, Lindy's, they have the, you know, dropping going up. Maybe some of the businesses would put some banners in their parking lots on their light poles, you know, just to, 'cause they're part of the town, you know? So that would give us some more space, like maybe Gators Pub, you know, like some of the places that have the larger parking lots and they have their own light poles and stuff, you know, that could be a way of extending it.
Yeah, that, that came across my mind as far as when we first came across this hurdle of, okay, who owns the, the pole or who's in charge of the pole? You know, town property, the old Town Hall, schools and whatnot. But I really don't think it's gonna be an issue as far as getting the state to allow us to put those banner, the banners on those utility poles. Like Mr. Corvo said, it's, it's just a matter of putting in the application. There shouldn't be any restrictions, so to speak, or pushback. If there is, then we can definitely go down that road as far as asking local businesses to, to utilize their property. Our own town, you know, property like the old Town Hall and schools and whatnot.
Yeah, even the library and the post offices, you know, because we already donated, you know, the post office was, they changed the name, you know, so
Oh, that's true.
you know, why not put some, some banners there?
Sure.
So I think we have a lot of opportunity in town. It's just trying to figure out how it works.
Button it up, yeah.
Now, as far as, as far as the application process, 'cause obviously, we wouldn't wanna just have it be just gangbusters where, you know, people just wanna banner and, and there's no, there's no process involved. What would be, I'm just throwing this out there, what would be your thoughts of maybe involving like the senior advisory committee? You know, 'cause many of them, I mean, they've, they either have a close relative that has fought in prior wars or, you know, not too distant prior relatives.
The town has a veteran advisor.
Yeah.
We appoint a veteran advisor.
Farrell.
Huh?
Farrell, I remember the killer.
And so, and so as part of the veterans group, they have a better handle on the numbers.
I think that, I think.
The numbers and the names.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a big missing piece for me right now is the numbers, the names. And that'll help me decide which, which direction to go to, how many banners we're actually gonna need, things like that. So if I can get that person's contact info, that'd be great.
So what is it that you would like, what is it, you, you need to vote?
No, no, I mean, really, I just wanted to set this up just as a discussion to give a high level. I know John had worked on this PowerPoint. And I mean, as you can see, I mean, just, just the idea of what he said from Memorial Day to the week after Veterans Day. I'm assuming where they have all the product materials, it doesn't take long for them to process that order, even if they come in on a, on a rolling basis. So I mean, you know, technically, I mean, we have, what, eight months or so, eight months to, to Memorial Day? So I mean, I, I would assume, just my recommendation, that the next step, not necessarily for us, but for, for Mrs. Sarekano would be to kind of fill in all those gaps and put together just a foreseeable implementation timeline or something like that.
Sure, yeah. And that, that's part of me being here is looking for my next actionable steps that I can take to, to close that gap and, and answer those questions. So I can partner with Mrs. O'Hara on, on the corporate side, funding. If I can get that gentleman's contact info who handles veterans affairs, that would be great. And then I can always come back with those, with those missing pieces.
I think you just have to reach out to DPW, too, and see if they would have the, the man labor to, to be able to handle this before we figure that they're gonna do it.
Okay.
Because a half hour per sign is, I mean, you know, if we have 25 signs, that's, you know, at least over a day's work, you know? So we're just gonna make sure that they can be able to do this if we're gonna ask that of them.
Well, question, so with the brackets, once they're up, are they stationary? Do, do they stay there year-round?
On socket, they leave the bracket up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can leave the bracket there.
Most of the cities in town leave the brackets up.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I mean, I'm assuming that initial installation is gonna probably take about a half hour. But ongoing is maybe 10 minutes?
Yeah, but then as we add, if we're gonna continue to add, then, you know, so every year it could be, you know, some time, so.
So actionable steps for me, partner with Department Works, right? Get the contact of the veteran affair and partner with Mrs. O'Hara on possible corporate funding. Anything else I'm missing?
I think just the logistics of how they're gonna be stored, where they're gonna be stored.
Okay.
You know, 'cause you might take them down one year and then you don't know where they are when it comes back to the, to the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, do we have the ability to, to store these and at DPW at the station, do you know?
I can tell you that we've put into place, there's a little cutout, let's see where it is. Where in there, that has all the Christmas decorations downstairs, it's jammed.
I have, I have a garage. You can store it in my garage.
I have my garage, too.
No, I know, I mean, I don't mean that my house, I mean my business. I have, that's where Mrs. O'Hara's yard signs are.
We, we might be able to facilitate this, yeah, I saw this, they're not that big.
They roll up.
I mean, if you can roll them up and put them like in, you know, like.
They probably come in boxes when they get it, keep the boxes and put them back.
Yeah, I would, I would assume we should be able to find some sort of, of property that we can store them on, whether it's school, town, somewhere, I think, I think we'd be able, 'cause again, they, they roll up, they're small. Even if we have 100 of them, I don't think that's gonna be that much space needed.
He, the administrator's got a big house. He can just find room in his, one of his rooms.
Nice.
And I'll at least have to tell Farrell, say, hey, we had a great idea.
It is a very good idea.
We might reach out to Richard Keen as well, whatever it is. There's a bunch of groups in town, but it's gonna have to take a coordinated effort of volunteers.
Yes.
As you know, you do a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The high school, it's a phenomenal idea, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's just ironing out the details, the logistics of it and, you know, the details of the funding, whatever route we take.
It's cheap enough that you could just ask individuals if they want to sponsor a, a flag.
That, that, that was the second option, family sponsoring. So like I said, we can, we can utilize our local papers, our magazine that we have, the Town Magazine, to put in an ad for sponsorship. Do you wanna sponsor your, your family veteran? You know, roughly rounding up 150 bucks covers everything but installation.
Right.
So I will, I will do my part and take those next steps and point of contact, is it okay if I still use Mr. Corvo for, for my point of contact on this or, okay. Perfect.
All right.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to see you again. Thanks.
Two more quick items. There you go, sir.
Discussion by Councilwoman of the action on penalties and adjustments. Mr. Jesus?
At this time, I am requesting a penalty adjustment in the amount of $625.53.
Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Make a motion that we approve the penalty adjustments in the amount of $625.53 per the recommendation of the finance director.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion by Councilwoman of the action on award of bid for police vehicles, 2022 Ford SUVs.
Detective Donovan's not here, so I'll be presenting the award, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
We went out for bid on September 22nd for two Ford police interceptors. We only received one bid and that was from McGovern Municipal. And we also received a bid for the vehicle equipment from Global Public Safety. The cost of the motor vehicle, of the interceptors are $36,434.35 each, for a total of $72,868.70. There is also a bid that came separately for the vehicle equipment for $18,067.01 for each vehicle, for a total of $36,134.32.
So it costs $18,000, but all the, all this police stuff in there?
Yes, because usually the interceptors fully loaded from last year were about $55,000. So if you add the 18 and the 36, for some reason, this year, when they sent in the bid, McGovern, it's usually MHQ that usually sends it in and it's fully loaded, fully equipped. This time, McGovern, from what I understand from Detective Donovan, McGovern sends it out to be equipped. So that company also put in a bid for the equipment. I've never seen it come like this before. It's, it's very different. It adds up, actually, it's lower than what they put in the capital. It came in lower.
Okay.
So we're buying, we're looking to buy two new vehicles.
Yes.
But we're not retiring two vehicles, because I would assume that we would transfer the stuff from the old vehicles to the new vehicles.
Usually, we retire them, don't we?
Huh?
Yeah.
Usually.
Don't you usually take the stuff from inside and?
That's what I'm, that's my question.
I don't think it's what, I don't know if it's the same equipment that you're speaking about. I wish Detective Donovan was here to answer the questions, but unfortunately, he's not. And I can't answer them.
The 18 is just, is just for lights and sirens on this thing?
Did I give you the backup? Did I buy any chance?
Radios?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we have all that equipment bothering the lights on vehicles right now.
This is what we have, Cynthia.
I didn't give you, okay. The backup for Global, it says, and, and I don't know what the, all these mean, maybe you all know what it means, Legacy Light Far, EON T Series Linear, Duo Linear Blue and White Black. I don't know what these mean. Strip light with dual flasher, tracer duo, five lamp. I mean, you can, I can go on and on, console housing.
Right, they're lighting packages.
Mount kit, universal. So I can't, I don't know what they do with the old equipment.
So can we just table this till he can attend the meeting so we can ask questions?
The bid will still be good in two weeks? The bid will still be good in two weeks? That's the other thing.
It doesn't have a it doesn't
The bid will open on the twenty-sixth of September.
It, it doesn't have a deadline for, um, and it just went out to bid September twenty-sixth, so I don't see a problem.
We have at least thirty days.
Absolutely.
We all have six months waiting for it.
Wow.
I know.
Not yet.
That's a whole other issue.
Yes.
Are they in stock? Do we know that?
I, I don't know. I, I, I'm just surprised. I'm just as surprised as you are with the way they came in.
If they were that urgent, I'm sure someone would be here, so.
I mean, we can award the bid and we don't pay it till, till we actually take possession of the vehicle anyways.
That's correct.
Correct, so, even if it's six months out, we know that it's six months out, we need to order them.
So I, um, so I can ask Detective Donovan to come to the next meeting, or?
Yeah, if you would, please.
Okay, we're just gonna table that, we don't need a motion to table that, right? Wouldn't need a vote to table? No, we didn't take so. All right, uh, finally, discussion by council, what are the action on North Smithfield High School? Uh, payment, oh, one payment to Turf Field, Turf USA.
Bless you.
Mr. Jesus on this one, you get this one too?
Yeah, yes, I received, um, this from Mr. Allen CP, and, um, it was already approved by the school committee for payment. This is the final payment for the turf in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. This does come from their revolving account, but we do get reimbursed from the school department. And this is the last payment.
I said we don't pay it, what are they gonna do, come and pull it up? Is there a motion on this one?
Do you wanna gamble on that?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, application for payment to, um, who is it to? To, uh, Field Turf USA in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and forty-one cents as the final payment for the turf field.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second on that? Any discussion?
Just on the discussion, ironic that Field Turf USA, that we're paying this to a Canadian company, you know?
Yeah.
Good catch, yeah.
Yeah, but they also have a Georgia address on here.
Uh, anything else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.